Seven o'clock, I will stand to pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Amendments to the agenda?
I have one, if the board is interested. Request, under new business, to add approval, discussion and approval of Fairhaven revolving loan fund loans, business loans.
Fairhaven what?
Revolving loan fund for business loans.
I'll make a motion to add, under new business, revolving loan program request discussion.
Is there a second?
This is Glenn.
This is Glenn's on, Glenn's online.
Scared you, didn't it? Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that will be under new business. Alright, minutes. First will be June 27th.
I'll make a motion with fifth minute for June 27th as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Additions, deletions, subtractions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And for the special meeting on July 4th. Motion to approve, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on July 4th as written.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? All at the same questions, anything additional and deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Five minutes for public comment.
I'll go.
Mr. Ben.
I appreciate everything you guys do. I know you guys work hard and do a lot for the community. But, I don't know how many of you guys know my little madness. Those of you that do know me and all that, I'm pretty significantly involved with the youth athletics in our town. And, there's a growing displeasure with the support the town gives the youth. And, it's becoming more and more talked about among the adults that have kids in youth sports. And, I'm not talking in comparison to places like Burlington or Albany, I mean Castleton, Pittsburgh, towns similar to ours that have full-time rec directors making a reasonable salary. One of the reasons we can't keep a rec director is because the wage we pay is not a year-round position. And, we had a coaches meeting the other night and I brought up rec basketball. This is something that every town in our district has and I was told we can't do it because we don't have the ability to pay a rec director during the winter. So, Fairhaven boys and girls theoretically, third and fourth grade don't get to play basketball like Castleton or Pittsford or Brandon or Rutland because we won't pay somebody to organize it. Last year, I organized it and did it just because I wanted my kid to be able to play. But, it shouldn't always be on the shoulders of parents. And if I didn't do it, I made sure there was an opportunity for the girls, the young girls want to have the chance to play. And I've been around drawing a little bit and I just know that we're not going to keep him long with what we're paying him. He's going to do a lot of good things in whatever community he becomes a part of, wherever he chooses to live, as a teacher or a rec director. And, our programs are never going to grow or never going to improve if we have a new person in that position every year. It just makes sense, like, he came in cold this year and he was set up to fail. Like, he didn't fail, but he was set up to because of the hand he was dealt. The equipment that is provided for our young kids to play rec baseball and softball is not, it's not good enough. And, we're not putting enough into our youth. We really, really are. And, and this isn't the only reason, I don't see a lot of, we're not giving people many reasons to keep their kids here. If they care about sports or just giving our kids positive things to do, like Castleton, just buying the Castleton Elementary School. And, I know that's not an option for us, but, that's a pretty significant thing that they were able to do for the youth in their community. That they now have a place to go play basketball, they have a place to go play baseball inside. And I just, I just wish we could do more for our kids and it's really hard to do when we don't have any money to throw at, throw at it.
Let me ask you, um, tell me what you, I mean, you said that a full-time rec director would be what we'd need. Is there any other solution that you think might work or at least might improve the situation, other than hiring a full-time rec director?
More money, obviously, like, most, so, most of the equipment that I was, that I know is like, parents buy it. I bought catcher's gear, these, and then I hand it down to the next dad that's coaching. Most of the stuff that our kids are using, I bought by parents that are, that invest in their kids and their kids' friends as opposed to the town funds. And, I know money's hard to come by for every town. I know it's not easy. I get it. I just don't know how often we're making decisions based on our youth.
Um, so, what, putting the, the rec, a director aside for a second, what other equipment, I mean, do you think that we're needing, in need of right now?
We need everything. All the stuff is out there.
And this is for baseball, basketball?
We don't have a basketball rec program because we don't have enough money to pay somebody in the winter. So, if a parent doesn't step up and volunteer their time, our third and fourth grade kids don't get to play basketball. That's wrong.
Well, I agree to a certain extent, but there used to be always a very active and viable rec committee that just went by the wayside. And, that helped, that helped direct our knowledge of what was needed. It helped us to get to the point of where we're funding. The, the whole idea of a, of a rec director is, is just tough. It's, it's tough to come up with the money. And if you watch us during budget, during the budget time, we're, we're not, we're not the high school, we're not the high school. We can't just get money. We, we, you should see us fight over fifty dollars.
I get it.
You know, and it's, 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 I agree, because every time a kid's playing sports, they're not doing dope.
Exactly.
You know, it's, I agree, and, and I wish we could, we could come up with a solution. Part of it is, is volunteer, is to get a viable rec committee. The other end of it is to, if, if everybody feels strongly about a, about a rec director, and there's more talk about, oh, we're, we're getting a little push on the board here for that a little bit, and, um, it's, it's an expense. I mean, we, the budget was up, you know, it was what, four, almost five percent? Four, six, four, seven, this, this time, and, and that's higher than we normally like to have it, and it was tough to do, but, you know.
And I know we have to prioritize. I just would like to see our kids become a priority.
Aye. And. I get where you're coming from.
And, this is just a, just a suggestion. We were talking last time about maybe tying it in with something else and I know you had an idea of tying it in with something, and I know it's a struggle down there to get the grounds taken care of. Again, we have dads and moms going down there to mow the field on the night of a game because the grass is knee deep. So, maybe you tie it in, just some grounds with the rec directing, because I know the town's shorthanded when it comes to maintaining the fields down there in the park here, so maybe we could tie it into something like that.
That's not stupid. I mean, that's not a stupid idea.
You know, um, and I just, we also talked about, when we lost that building down there, that was a concession stand. That's thousands of dollars a summer we could be making if we had a concession stand down there. There's hundreds of kids down there, eight, nine, ten teams from Fairhaven, playing incoming teams. I mean, there's hundreds of kids down there at suppertime that would buy waters and hot dogs and whatever else if we had a place to do it. We don't, last year they tried to do it at two picnic tables. Like, they're just bandit after bandit after bandit down there.
I will say this, um, I have a good deal of experience in, in private community management. And, we're always, where, where money was always an issue and raising HOA and condo dues were always, always contentious and all that. But, the one thing I tried always to do is when I, when I voted on projects or I prioritized them was, what project will affect more, more residents in this community positively? Which are the ones that will have a direct effect on more people? And, I agree with you wholeheartedly, because I think that if this is, I mean, I, I actually live up on North Main so I can see down onto the field, so I see what's going on, and I agree with you that if there are so many kids that are participating in this, it's something that should be prioritized, and whatever the solution might be, you know, my, you know, I, I think that that is something that we really need to look at, because I think that, you know, more, more than many projects, you know, keeping our kids, you know, not only, not only keeping them involved, but keeping them safe, which we do when they're involved. I think that that should be a priority, and to the extent it's not, I hope that there's something we can do about it.
We have a lot of good people in Fairhaven willing to do a lot of good stuff, it's just, I think, we need a little bit of help. So, and, there's a lot of people that I think are starting to realize that, and he really is really good at what he does and we're lucky to have him, but we're going to lose him. We're going to lose him. I guarantee you, if we don't do something different, he's going to leave. How could he stay on that salary? With a wife and kids in five years? He can't. So, he's going to go someplace else where he can make enough money to live.
Joe, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you jump me on something? Tell me, what, what do we have in place now? We have a, a rec director or somebody who's acting in that capacity right now?
This is the man here, that's your rec director.
Pleasure to meet you.
Ryan Lawrence.
Pleasure to meet you. Okay, and what, and is it a paid position or is it?
It is, it's a paid position for like, the first few months of the fiscal year, or the calendar year, to get baseball set up, run baseball, transition into our day camp, finish up day camp, and then that's, that's where it ends.
It doesn't peel off into the fall and, and like, in the winter, which is what Luke was talking about.
Even our kids have to go to Castleton to play rec soccer. That was, our kids, that was not a thing when I was growing up. We played rec soccer here. And, to think that...
Well, it was because of volunteers like your father. You know, I, I don't, I don't mean to make light of that, it's just that it's a different world now. And, so, it's, it's something that's got to be sold to the, the people in town of Fairhaven. There's as many people that would probably howl at a full-time rec director as there is that want it. So, the, the answer is, is do the politics.
I think there's a lot of people that are starting to see it, that have young kids in the community, and I, I can, I can bring sixty people in here. I, I didn't come to argue or, you know, the idea that, I just bringing the information, and if, if it needs to be a mob, it can be a mob.
No, it's not a mob, but what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, our budget season is October through January.
Yep.
That if we get, if we get the push that we're hearing, that is, then we'll try to figure a way to get it in there. But, we can't just bring it out a whole clock. It's different, you know, back, even back when your father and my time, when you guys were small, we, we could eke out some volunteer time, you know, we, we could find people who volunteers or we would volunteer. And, it's tough now. It's tough to get that.
We're hanging on by our fingernails. There's a lot of good people, and I could list them, I won't, but there's a lot of people that give a ton of their time and it's usually the same people doing rec basketball, rec baseball, rec soccer, rec football. It's the same people doing all of that, but the whole process could be so much better if we also did have to mow the lawn, figure out the budget, figure out the equipment. If we could just go down there and volunteer our time to coach and organize the kids, we would have a lot more success, but when we also have to pay for the equipment, bring down our lawn, so, not only do I have to get out of work early to coach, I got to get out of work an extra hour to mow, and then I have to also pay for the equipment to make sure my kids have bats and helmets and baseballs.
Well, that shouldn't, there should be enough money, I'm just looking.
There isn't.
Can I jump in?
Go ahead.
Just to give the board some perspective, uh, according to the CDC, at a 2020 study, fifty-four percent of children age six to seventeen play sports. In Fairhaven, we have roughly seven hundred people in the five to seventeen, eighteen age range. Roughly three hundred and seventy-five kids play in sports as a, as a best guess estimate. That's a lot of families, that's a lot of taxpayers that that's impacting. Unfortunately, and what Bob was kind of speaking to, our demographic has had, uh, poor voter turnout. And if it's not supported in the booths, how, you know, how can it be discussed? And that's one thing I know I've been trying to talk to folks about is, hey, if we want this, it's, it requires money and people have to support it, because what I hear often is, you know, people don't want their taxes going up, but, they're open to spending some money if they can see the results. And there are, I, I agree with Luke, there are a lot of families that are asking for recreation-based results in this town.
And, and to that point, you know, while I certainly appreciate the, the need for, for, you know, community support and a little politicking, I mean, at the same time, we as a board, we're tasked with doing what is best for the people of our town. And so, you know, like you said, Bob, people will howl, but they're going to howl at anything we do. You know, it's, this is, I mean, this is, we, we have the, there seems to be a, a population out there that will never be satisfied, no, you know. I mean, if, if we walked in there and said, well, guess what, we're funding the entire town of our own bank accounts and we're giving each of you a new car, you'd, you'd have.
I know.
You'd have complaints, but, and, and I think that ultimately, you know, if this is something that, that we deem as important, and I think, I mean, Chad's preaching to the choir with me, I mean, you know, when you have all of these children participating, that's important. You know, this is not some, this is not somebody's frivolous, you know, little request. So, I think that, you know, whatever politicking we do, I think we also have an independent authority to, to do what's best.
We certainly do, and, but, if you don't, if you don't have the support, you won't be on the board very long and, and, uh, nothing happens. I agree.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I add?
Go right ahead.
I, first, I, I, I agree with what I heard earlier that we somehow have to re-energize our recreation committee. But that said, I'm pretty sure we put money into mow, I think it was about seven thousand dollars, it just became available July 1. So, if there's mowing, I thought we, the voters voted in, would we, would to take care of places, and one of them was the playground field. That's first, then, we'd want to make sure that if things need to be mowed, we, we should have the monies to mow. Number two, I thought we still had some money left over when we put the bathrooms down there of about twenty grand. If the answer is to try to put something for a concession stand, I think we got some monies to do that. What we don't have probably is the group that's doing the legwork out there, that would be the rec committee in my mind. That would do the legwork, it would look and say, hey, what, what can we have for a reasonable concession stand here? But I think we already have monies that, that are there. Number three, down at the Louis Fringer's Field, for years, we had all those, I look at the businesses out there, the money's coming in, and it would be great to try to get back to where we, we would get monies that would help pay for the equipment, Luke, you were talking about.
Absolutely.
It would be fantastic if we had fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year, that you shouldn't, shouldn't have to, a lot of parents can't afford to go out and buy that equipment you're talking about here. Absolutely, but there should be ways that we can, I think there's some ways that we can do to help ourselves.
There absolutely is. And, for one, that field that you're talking about with all the signs, isn't real, that field isn't really in use very often anymore because they've moved up to the high school most of the time. So, maybe we look at doing something on the little league or softball field where we could put some signs up there. Maybe a permanent fence goes up there. And these are all, um, solutions that if we had somebody that was locked in as a rec director for more than a year or two, this person could solve that. And we did talk recently about developing a board, so if we do lose our rec director, at least the board could help transition that whole process. We were lucky last time, Nicole Royce, because she has kids in the community, young kids, she spent a ton of time this spring with Ryan. But, if Ryan gets a teaching job in Connecticut where he's from, he's gone, the next person comes in cold again. If we don't have a committee or a board to help that person along, that's another nightmare spring. I agree.
I, I, I am not disagreeing with it all. What's, but see, we don't know numbers, and that's where the rec committee used to help, because you, we're, we're thinking, you know, if we add a hundred dollars to what we did last year, we're good, and, uh, you know, and I.
If he was here three years, he'd probably have all these answers for us. He could tell you, you know, if we do this much fun, I'm going to be covered with equipment, and I could buy a new piece of equipment every year, and we'll have enough money from concessions to put up a permanent fence with the money that's coming in from the signs, X, Y, and Z, and we need to pay some, this, this whole thing could probably pay for itself if we just supported it for a couple of years. And you pay somebody like him that has the ability to do it the right way, he can probably raise enough money that we're coming out ahead. As opposed to paying some, paying someone ten thousand dollars a year to do a hazard job. If we pay him enough money, he could probably make us money. He could probably, making the town money down there with a good concession stands, with good sponsorship, with good programs, people from Castleton would not have been in Fairhaven instead of Rutland.
And, and Luke, I, I just think, it sounds like what I'm hearing is, you've got a lot of support, the idea that we need, that we need to do better and bring something in. I just think that now we, we gotta put, uh, put some more wheels on this now.
Well, we need, we need a realistic idea, I mean, obviously, obviously, um, it's, a rec director is a, is a huge step for this town. A permanent rec director, or something that's, that pays enough money to keep somebody around.
A contingent, basically.
But, before, if you can get some people together and come up with an idea of numbers, so that.
I'll communicate it to a chat.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, so, when we're ready to do a budget, we know what we're up against, and, you know.
And, short, short term, Luke, what there is, I don't want you walking away thinking there's no money. There is money in place. You need to, you need to, if there's some mowing or, or a piece of fence needs to be fixed or something like that, we, we should be talking with Joe and, and seeing if we can pull that off.
Okay. I appreciate it, and I appreciate you guys listening. I really hope.
Chief, we appreciate you, you coming in.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. No, I agree with everything that's been said here. That's very, very important, and I'm one hundred percent for it. And, what if we started by getting a committee together again? Maybe three people, four people, and come up with these numbers? And let's figure out what it would cost us to put a full-time rec director in?
Let's try me with it.
And, and, I, I heard mentioned maybe a couple of other duties that they could do to fill in? Maybe help write a grant or two, or mow, or something?
To get something, right?
Yeah. I'd, I'd be totally in agreement with that.
Chief.
I have just, the one thing I was thinking when I started with it, because I've been here forever, is when that concession stand went, they haven't really had source income. Parents ran that rec committee out. I know there was an issue with flood queen, but I think that was, it just could happen.
Well, I thought.
Flo like twenty on the shed.
I, I, well, I thought we, at one point, we talked about doing a, doing a food check, a food check, you know, just a regular toe behind. That seems the easiest way, and then you can move it around the way you need it.
Just to give you an idea how bad it was down there to start the year, we had no bathrooms down there. You got female coaches, female players running into the woods to go to the bathroom. That should not be happening down there. That's not, that's not okay.
No, it's not.
You know, not, I mean, it just, we're better than that.
We're pretty much, we're pretty much shot this summer, but let's see what we can do for the.
Absolutely.
For at least the fall and the, although, there's, the monies won't be, it's gonna be there for this year.
Is there a little one down there with decent bathrooms and?
The bathrooms are there.
Yeah, the bathrooms are there.
We'll never open them, and there's always something wrong with them. It's just like, so, a porta potty came down there, I think we had one porta potty, but it'd be nice for people to be able to go use the bathroom, that, like that trailer that's down there, you know.
That's supposed to be working. If it's not, then we need it to be.
Well, we had some, we had some vandalism and then it was tough getting parts, so, not to make excuses, but, it seems like there's always something with that thing.
Well, we spent some money on it, we should.
Keep going.
Use it.
Absolutely.
I don't mean to blow you off, but.
I appreciate you guys hearing me out.
Well, no, that's fine, you're right, and we've got to do, we've got to do it right.
So, can we get a committee together?
We talked about that. I think we definitely, there's people that are willing to do it, for sure. There was talk about it, and there was people that said they wanted to do it. I think that would be a good start.
Generally speaking, it's always the, it's a committee of the people, the parents who are that, that age, that have kids that age, and it just kind of rotated through. It was really helpful to have those guys around, because they would keep our feet to the fire if nothing else. That would be helpful.
Appreciate it.
Okay, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll do better. Any other five minutes for public, that was a little more than five minutes. Uh, department head report.
Can I go first?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Alright, I'll go first. Uh, just to follow up what we talked about at the, the previous regularly scheduled meeting, we're starting to improve operations down at the transfer station. Uh, I talked to Nate about doing a little bit of rework inside that shack, so that way, um, you only need one person to actually man the, um, scales and, and punch cards. Uh, that's going to happen, I think he said tomorrow, he's going to go in and start that project. It's just going to be a counter, nothing, nothing very fancy, um, just to, just to help expedite work. Um, and then we're going to get that second person out of the shack cleaning and helping our residents. This is what, we, we should be doing that, so that, we're moving in that direction.
Whatever you do down there, get those guys involved, let them be, let them lead it, you know? They won't, finds one way they will. That's where we're at.
There is, so I was talking with Bonnie the other day, Bonnie Rosati from the police department. Um, you will see a, a book drop-off box down there, um, as a way to kind of take stuff out of our waste stream, uh, you know, there's, there's use for these old books. So, if you have old books, I think it'll be there Thursday. You can drop them in that box and they haul them off for us. Uh, the roof at the water plant, uh, I had to have a company come out and do a temp repair on the water plant today. Um, it was leaking a little bit, uh, and then it got worse, so, that's patched up. I'm working to develop an RFP to get, um, get a roof put on that building. Uh, more to come on that. Uh, Ryan was here on Monday, we talked to the, oh, Ryan's still here. Um, we, on Monday, last Monday, we talked to, um, the baseball coaches, like I've mentioned. They did give us, at that time, they told us what we needed. So, yes, we do need some, some extra pads, um, we, maybe some bats, definitely more balls. Um, we, maybe some bats, definitely more balls. Um, you know, stuff wears out, so we're, we're moving forward with that, just organizing the-
Can I, can I ask, that was one of the things I wanted to ask. There's, there's like fifteen hundred dollars in there. What does that do for you? For equipment, for baseball equipment? That's just baseball?
Not much.
Not much. I, I get that. As soon as I saw the number, I knew I was gonna be Hillary.
Like one team it would do a lot, but not for twelve.
Yeah.
See it twelve, so.
A set of catcher's gear runs about, what, four hundred now?
Close to it, yeah.
It's-
A year, it's like two hundred at least.
Yeah.
Like I, like put a catcher's gear in the last two or three years, so. It's just a lot of money down there.
Oh, well, it's just to get a working number, you know, because it's been a long time, you know, since I was looking at a catcher's vent in Norton's hardware.
How much did we spend on baseballs this year? Do you remember?
Uh, a piece of them out.
It was a huge amount. It's shocking how expensive. I didn't know baseballs were that expensive.
It's about eight dollars a ball.
Is it real?
Six dollars if I had to like a warehouse.
So bucket of balls. Yeah, there you go.
Bucket of balls.
Consider, consider that the average major league baseball game goes through twelve dozen balls. So that's, and even, even when you're like good about, about retrieving them, you still have to deal with where and everything else.
Yep.
Uh, building off that too, there's a considerable amount of field reconstruction down there that has to happen. The last thing I'd wanna see is the field be overgrown and unplayable down the road. It's more than, it's more than mowing and, and, uh, top clay for the infield. It's digging down, resurfacing and, uh, you know, making some repairs to the, the grounds. It's, it's in need of a lot.
Was the T-ball field we were gonna?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, like Glenn said, there was some money that the voters set aside to do some work down on the fields. And that money along with, uh, some labor to do that is gonna clean up. We'll be able to get at least one field cleaned up.
Yeah.
I don't know how far it's gonna go.
Well, if you, yeah, if you tackle them on a rotating basis.
It's like everything else. Yep, it's infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's maintenance. So, yes. Um, letters, I don't know if I told you, uh, told the board recently or not, but so, so those bushes on Carnarvon, Allen and Carnarvon, we did send letters out to those folks. Uh, if we don't hear back by like next week, we're just gonna go in with the chainsaws and clean it up.
Can build my help? Can build my help?
You know, they tell me I'm not allowed to do that. VLCT tells me I'm not allowed to do that. Bill, uh, bill the homeowner for the labor to clean. Where I used to, where I lived originally, if you didn't cut your grass, you got a bill at the end of the year.
Well, and if it forces us to do the work, then we should be reimbursed for it, so.
It's Lauren incentive not to do the work, right? Cause I'm saying, well, I'll come and do it.
There you go. It's great. They'll, they'll come out eventually.
Yep. Uh, Eileen is here. Eileen's here. So between Eileen and myself, we've been kind of cleaning up our how-to, our how-to guides, the SOPs, uh, tech sales, water shut-offs, budget prep, uh, revenue collection, that kind of thing. Um, we clean those up, put them on the shelf, uh, just in case we all get hit by a bus. The next person will be able to figure out how to do all this without trying to decode what it's supposed to say and do. Permit packet that we talked about way back in May, that's done.
Good.
Um, it's online. It's, if someone was to take that off the shelf, it's a, it's the basic permit package. The state has so much that is involved for them that you actually have to talk to the state, which we put that link in that connection on the website, so.
Well, that's all it should be. It, it should be what's Fairhaven's, what you need to satisfy Fairhaven. However, to satisfy Fairhaven, you have to satisfy the state. This is the link.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Yep. Uh, we sent out some made in Fairhaven onesies. How many did we get out this time?
I'd say seven or eight.
Seven or eight, you know, the onesies we produce and made.
And then the, the dippies ended up like giving them to, and then people that have moved into town, so. They have that. I don't know if the package they've gotten out could be cut up.
Yeah, the welcome packets. Uh, I talked to, I talked to the historical society. It's, then this came up about the, this came kind of to my attention, uh, when I was looking at the bushes overgrown on Carnarvon. Um, some of our homes in Fairhaven are just, they're, they're falling apart. And I don't know if it's just for want of cash to be able to do repairs or just neglect, but, um, I talked to the historical society a little bit about it. Um, and there are funds that USDA will provide for us that's a revolving loan, much like we do for our businesses. We can get some money to our homeowners so they can improve their homes and then they pay us back over time. I don't know if it's something that would work in Fairhaven, um, but it's something to think about.
Do we have to have a historic zone or just a register of historic homes? Just anything old enough?
Any, not even old enough.
Just anything?
You've got something that was built in nineteen eighty, you wanna put some shingles on? Here's some money, pay us back.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's just, while we're on, Joe, I have to talk. Maybe set aside a little bit of money, you know, a lot, fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred. Have somebody do the ordinances and code, you know, we don't have a code, but, yeah. I get saddled with it, which I do think we have somebody like our animal control officer, like, effectively, that did animal, and, or we had somebody that just did that. So if they call, they call an ordinance officer to deal with, to jump cars and to deal with everything that I get saddled with. Goes into where you're talking about some of the homes get dilapidated, some of the code stuff. Be able to bring up the ordinances, tighten up our ordinances a little bit, just food for thought down the road. I'm not looking for forty thousand or something, small nominal fees to do stuff like that. It's just, it's hard for me. I get saddled with it.
I mean, or do the, are the houses that are the most dilapidated, I mean, are they, are they, are they generally rentals? Are they just the owners not doing, keeping them up? I mean, do you have any idea, you know, what?
I've, I've seen, uh, it's a mixed bag, honestly. Um, I know there's, there's, I'm not gonna identify, but I know there's a very nice home that has some, somebody living in there, just, it's just fallen down. A well-educated family, but historic homes kind of crumbling around you. And I just, it, it breaks my heart because the architecture in Fairhaven is beautiful. There's, it just, you don't want it to disappear and then have an empty weedy lot. It's, it's tough.
And it is a little bit jarring. I mean, I've been doing my walks around town. When you see three very well-kept and, you know, manicured houses and then the next, the fourth is falling apart. So, I wish, I wish there was some sort of volunteer force who could go out and paint and do all that.
I would love to do that. That's your, you're not the first person to bring that up. And I, I would be happy to jump on, you know, a ladder and roller and help some paint just a house a year.
The problem, the problem is you have to lead those horses to water because if they don't, if they don't want you on their property, they're, you, you can't do a darn thing.
I was just gonna say that here. It, it's a fine line between saying, do you want some help or somebody feeling like they're being told that they're-
Well, considering how many like home improvement shows there are on TV and there are literally dozens and dozens. I was thinking, you know, maybe we could call one of them and find out if they could like make us their feature town or something and come in and-
Hometown.
Yeah, Hometown, that would be great. I, I'd love that.
When, when they started, uh, just as a side note, when they started the, uh, the construction here, I called the ghost hunters or emailed the ghost hunters and told them about our ghost. Nobody told me. That would've been fun though. Uh, and, uh, so the, the MERP, I started to write this, so the MERP grant is open. The municipal energy, I think municipal energy resilience program. Uh, that's, there's five hundred thousand dollars available for the town of Fairhaven to drop into this building, um, for, uh, energy efficiency. So I've, I've reached out to already just to kind of get, get my feet wet. I reached out to a, a company that does solar and also does energy storage. So solar with a battery in the basement. Um, they seem to have solutions, but we're not there yet, but I have, I have to get the grant. I have to apply for it, so.
Do we have any matching funds?
There are no matching funds for the grant. It's five hundred thousand dollars in your pocket.
Free money.
It's, I'm gonna use every nickel that they, that they have.
On, on, on the same note, there was an email that came from, um, Regional about, uh, solar, or excuse me, uh, battery charging stations. Did you, I, I forwarded it to you. You should've gotten it anyways. But, um, check it out because it might be something we can incorporate down in the park, in the free park.
Mm-hmm. That project is still going, the EV chargers? Those are still going in?
Well, I know, but I, I mean, if, if we can put, if we can put more in, it just makes it, makes us a destination immediately. So, anyways, we're getting kind of, go ahead.
And that's what I had for you. I didn't get DPW's report, uh, today. Uh, I know they have been kind of pick, just picking away at some of the smaller things like the air conditioners in. Uh, they're upgrading, uh, up by End and Pond, Big Low Hill, uh, picking up the mess after the, uh, the storm.
Um, speaking of the storm, and I know those guys are thoroughly inundated with their own work, but if somebody reaches out to us for help, can we give a day or something? Or, or a truck and a man or something like that?
I would, yes, one hundred percent. If somebody needs some help, we will-
Dr. Pittsburgh is in trouble. West Roland got hit too. I'm not sure. I mean, some of the local guys, I don't think we have to drive to local, they'll probably find plenty of their own help.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if somebody needs, what do you guys feel about that? I mean, it's, it's a day or two of, we're losing labor here, but it seems like we should reach out to our neighbors if we can.
I agree.
Yeah.
What do you think you do?
Did, uh, I, I know months back, we reviewed our emergency management plan. How, how were we, how were we in terms of communication?
Emergency-
Prior to this event, yeah, how'd we, how'd we do?
With-
Just kind of prepping, just in case something flooded us out? Were we prepared? I guess that's the best way to ask.
We are not.
Well-
We are absolutely not. I know I'm gonna say that.
I know, but I, I would disagree with you. I think we are. There was just nothing to, there was no emergency in Fairhaven to worry about.
No, 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 no. I'm saying that it, and if, if we had what happened to Waterbury or Montbilly or Ludlow, it would be a helter-skelter mess in this town because we don't have a plan to say, this is, who's gonna do this? This is who's gonna do that? This is who's gonna do that? This is who's in charge of this? And it's all, it would be, it would take us three days to get organized and you might not have it. I, I don't, I just don't think we're there yet. And I'm, I'm not satisfied with what we've got so far and I, I am left there.
We've been, we've been lucky, but I would, I would say we're okay. Uh, even, even if there's, so I'm the emergency management director. There's, so there's Jim Heller and then there's me, right? I know when, I know when a tree comes, I know when a tree comes down. Like, there's a tree down in the road, Joe. Okay, take care of it. Like, if that is the level of information that comes in. Like, Park Avenue had a tree come down in its block. Okay, somebody takes care of it. In case of a larger emergency, I mean, when we had the incident with the officer, that fast I knew, that fast I was here. It's, it's not a joke. It's like, we're very well, we're very well-intouched and organized.
And I think that's good. I guess, one question I have specifically is, are we in communication well enough with the grade school to offer that as temporary shelter if need be? Like, who opens the grade school?
Uh, it's, you got me, I don't know.
No, and who, do you have the phone number of the superintendent?
I could call Chris Cole, I would call Berkeley, we'd have those buildings open and he would fill me in. Chris runs the emergency for all of this place.
It's just not, it's just not spelled out. It's just, it's, it's very, very, it's not specific.
So, so for emergency ma, and I'm not to belabor the point. So for emergency management, and chief, you have dealt with this more than I have. Um, no, it's not specific. Sometimes if I'm not here, the chief might take charge. Um, if the chief's not here, Jim might take charge. And it's, it's, it's intentionally flexible.
Flexible is fine, but I think what Bob's looking for is he's looking for, there's a book of contact.
I guess what you're doing with SOPs on the, this needs tomorrow, whether you're a job, I think that's where Bob's going. I understand, like, okay, this is a contact for Legion, so the contact for the school. So we have a book to open and say this is for this, or that, or something.
And if the chief, and if it's not the time manager, it's the chief, and then who's it next?
Well, that would fall in our incident command system. So I think we have that. I think what we're, the missing link, and maybe I'm wrong, what you're thinking is, yeah, Bill Campfield's the contact for this building or you're the contact for the time hall. Or that, I think that's the part of the, are we on the same page?
Yeah, I think so, to a certain extent, but I, I just want it to be more specific.
It's the development of a specific disaster preparedness plan.
Yeah.
And the gathering of the necessary people to say, hey, we all understand, we're all on the same page. And then reviewing it kind of systematically. Just, I have no doubt we have the, the, the get-to-it-ness to get it done and, you know, help, help the town. But it's just, it's always an exercise, at least in, in my line of work to, hey, if there's something that didn't hit us, what would we have done? And are we prepped?
Maybe for you guys, might be helpful to attend as the, the emergency planning meetings that, that happen monthly. Where they actually do tabletop exercises. If this happened in Mahali, we're gonna do X. And those happen monthly. And I can send out the email where I know there's a meeting and you guys can jump on either that or actually physically go and see, this is where we talk through, where all the emergency managers, coordinators in the county get together. Orwell's there, um, attends because they're close to here. So I think that would be maybe helpful for some of you on how that stuff operates.
Might be reassuring.
Uh, one question, Joe, before we get off the storm. Up on Scott Hill where we have water that's taken over one, one sub-lane of road again. If we could get a barrel, it's pretty deep right now. We get a barrel in front of that since someone detonated it early. It's, it's, it's pretty much one lane up there.
Yeah, I think there's already a barrel out there. I got a picture of a-
There's a barrel at one end, but it needs one coming from the state park.
All right, I'll get them out there.
We beat you up pretty much. You got anything else?
No, it wasn't bad. It's, uh-
It's always good to prepare and be ready for, for the things you don't know what to expect.
Chief? So I can't say it on the report, but like we did a lot. So we had just two arrests, um, we're at fifty-two for the year, which is halfway. Where we've averaged, we've been averaging from one ten to one eighteen. So we're right on pace as far as criminal arrests seem to be holding steady from last year. Traffic tickets, we did thirty-three. We have a thousand forty-one for the year, eleven warnings. We didn't do any parking tickets. We had one car crash in the last two weeks. We had fourteen sets of prints for two hundred eighty-five a year. Um, if you look down through the highlights, we did the touch truck. Uh, put a guy on for the lumberjack and for the five K to assist. Mark Patel started his third year with the department. And we, I won't go into details. We executed multiple search warrants on address, on suspects, three references, a person case. They were assisted by the Vermont State Police and the Illinois Security Investigative Unit. They're out booked, assisted by DPW and I heard nothing but props from the federal government and the state police on the case. Timely, showed up, worked hard. I'll take the beat and call him in for overtime, but my thought, well, it's cheaper to use the phone equipment than hiring out, say, eight, two hundred dollars in the office. So I thought that overtime would be cheaper than to do that. I can't go into any details on what was gathered as far as that case was. It does seem like we're moving in a positive direction. I've been working on this since December of twenty-two, it's consumed revenue. Um, on top of the other incident. That's still being, the shooting's still being, uh, investigated by the state police. I don't know if we'll have any resolution anytime soon. The city had a shooting, they had a fatality. That investigative unit is rather busy around the state right now. Sean is starting to come back a little bit. He's in the office today. I've just got him doing case work and like doing the fingerprinting. I don't think he's ready to do it back on the road. So it's gonna be a process to build up to get him back to do that. Seems to be doing well. Back to the missing person case, this continues and will probably continue on for a little while. Again, I'm checking updating more scans as of the time. If you move into the revenue, I did a, a pro, this is ours is approximate. We keep a database up there. When we take point about it and fingerprints, we put it in. So it might be a little off in what you guys do. So our approximate for the year, there is a type one bond, it should be two hundred and twelve nine seventy-five. So we brought in. Overall, for the fiscal year, the last month, we brought in 17, 17,500. So our revenue is, is up, it probably won't be up that high, that doesn't put some of the summer traffic we did for road construction last year, that was probably 25,000. The last two months, we have averaged over 5,000 in traffic, on the signs. Exactly what I explained to you before, we're telling people come to court. We're happy, people are happy, courts are happy. The judge is signing off on everything, it seems to be positive for everybody. Don't know what else I have, if you guys have any questions that I will try to answer once we attend.
No, I was just gonna ask you, Chief, I saw one entry on there, I think it was from July 9th, it said there was an animal problem on River Street. Is that that continuing problem that we've discussed before?
No, that was actually birds in the attic. I didn't know how to write, but it was an animal problem, but.
Birds in the attic.
We pretty much are the catch-all, and we do, we have free. There's so many calls, what do you do? You're like, yeah, we're coming, I don't mean.
Bats in the belfry, maybe?
I got the.
I know there is a push on larger law enforcement agencies to not handle that stuff. But I think we get more support by going over and trying, for not missing, obviously, to prioritize, which we don't have. Um, the only other thing I did have is, we did get asked to go Saturday, I had two guys go over, I went over myself also, to represent a fair, and the state said there was no obligation, but they allowed every agency accounting to be there. So we did go over, there was a transfer of the officer back from the medical examiner's office to the funeral home. We probably will go over this week, and after the funeral goes in, replace. Did talk to the chief, and I said, I know we're short-staffed with Danag, but if you need a control officer, I'm on over, answer calls. They've lost five in the last one death. Two out on leave, because I had their home shooting last week, and then two other officers were injured, and they were testing. Manchester sent a dispatcher, sent over the dispatch center today, Fish and Game covered control, Fish and Game, we're not covered, controls in the city. So we did offer to send a guy over, I know we're a bit short, but I would have done all the good, to send a guy over for shifts, to do, to help them. Calls, they seem to be starting to pick back up their own. It's a very bad state over there, the park is kind of a mess, I can't imagine, and the only thing I thought was, actually, they must do this. Kind of gets home, I don't know what's happening. I'll keep you up for us, I'll, I'll probably go through a few more ones before they're turned inside out.
Questions, Chief?
Thanks, Chief.
You got anything else, communications?
I, I say no, but you know how I am.
I do. All right, uh, I am assuming the appointment of trustee, public trustees is off the?
Yes, sir.
And downtown sidewalk grant discussion?
Back to a couple of questions, we, we need some answers for to move forward. It's already on the screen, looky there, so on the screen behind Bob is the, the plans. And let's see, starting with the questions, question one, we talked about the memorial slates placed around trees in the new park or elsewhere. I think the board was agreement to put it in the, in the little park that's gonna be placed there. So, new park. This question, herringbone stamped concrete, so anything, anything with the little hash marks here, these, these bump outs or the crosswalks? Anything that's kind of hashed out, is the, that's the, the, I don't know what you'd call that? Like the median between the street and the sidewalk? So in your, in the residential areas, that's the grass strip that's there. Feeling that grass, that would just grow up and be weedy, we thought, well, let's just make it concrete. And then taking the step a little further, can we make it fancy concrete to make the town look, you know, spruce things up a little bit? So the thought was to make herringbone in this little median portion here. And then, uh, do we want to make, so do you want to, the question is, do we want to leave it herringbone, or do we want to just make it regular concrete? And the second question is, uh, do we want to make it a colored concrete? To kind of delineate that, that stretch of?
How much more is that, or do you know?
I don't have a con, I don't have a concept.
I mean, is there any way you could provide us with, you know, what it looks like, I mean, or, or, you know, or the color that you're, you're thinking of? Because it's right, you know, it's, it's very theoretical, just looking at those plans.
Sure. I'm, I'm not thinking of a color, whatever, somebody had tossed out the idea of slate-colored. I, I don't know, if you're, I guess, kind of a grayish, which is concrete anyway.
Yeah, it's, it, if you, if you do what the, the state did, Glenn laid for slate, it turned out to be gray block. So regular concrete would be just as well. You know, they, they spent a extra lot of money to make that supposedly look like slate, and it looked like concrete. That was dark.
Agree.
But they paid money for it, that's why I'm worried about that.
I mean, we could just make it concrete and just call it a day.
I think that would be your best bet.
The herringbone is correct?
No, no, it's just, it's stamped, it's stamped, it's stamped concrete, yeah.
It's probably not a lot more money, it would be a little better looking, but it, it's probably more money, but.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah. Can I ask you a question? I got hit up back in the main street part.
Oh, this, this one?
What's the parking on here? Is that angled, or is that?
That's angled parking, let me see if I got one with, uh, with some parking lot park, no, I don't have a parking spot on it. So right, this is the one with the, with the trees, but, um, so this section here, that's angled parking. And then that's, that's also angled parking, just.
So you're backing, you're backing out into the street here?
Yep.
Okay. So I was wrong, I have to apologize to Rosie. Okay.
And then up. Uh, where's the other one?
What's your pleasure, folks? Colored concrete, herringbone?
Concrete, plain.
Mistake, plain? A big sidewalk. I, for the sake of not having like a sea of concrete, I'd say color, colored concrete.
At one time, was this all gonna be grass?
That's, we talked about making it grass, but, um, it's, it's so difficult to maintain that it would just, it would go by the wayside. It'd get salty, and then we'd get weedy.
I heard one concrete, I heard one.
It'd be nice to have a price, what the color of concrete would actually cost. I mean, I know they just throw diet and kind of green when they do it, I don't know if that would be all expensive or not.
I think you got a project that we're gonna fight, try to keep it within a reasonable cost. I, myself, don't want to put any special, anything. That is, we're gonna have our hands full paying for what we put in.
When do we have to give an answer on this?
We can keep kicking the can. I, I don't, I don't need an answer now.
I mean, I mean, Rich, to Rich's point, Rich wants to know what the price is, I'd like to see what it actually looks like. And so I think if we can get that information, then I think we could make an, an educated.
You could probably pull up.
I mean, except the only.
My only concern would be, I don't want it to turn into like our parking lot, where we keep changing the design, changing the design, and you add a year or two to the cycle, because we want to keep tweaking things. That's my concern.
Well, I mean, I, I think that there's no, I mean, some of us don't have a basis to, to make, you know, any, to have any opinion on it, because we don't have the information. I mean, I don't think we're trying to change something that's there, I mean, once we can see what, what you're contemplating, then we can make a decision on it. I don't think it should be, take that long.
That's okay, I'm just saying, my frustration is, we, if you, we don't want to beat this to death for months, of where, what we want. We put in a spec saying, this is what we want, it got approved, we should be moving forward.
Okay, so here's, it's a little bit of colored concrete, I mean, it's not gonna be like that, but some, some colors. Some patterns. I, I can, so, no, I don't know, there's, there's some good textures. So no, I don't need an answer today. Uh, we, we can talk about it later, for the price, Rich, I, I could tell you it's $5,000 today, and when I get to, when I get to construction, they'll tell me it's 10. I, I don't have any idea what that's gonna cost.
I could, I could understand it would look better if it was a contrast, or we definitely agree with that. It's, you know, have a gold sky high, but as far as all those memorial plaques, I mean, I, I think they should be, made them on the spot there, reset very nicely. I think that would look nice.
There's your herringbone concrete, stamped concrete. I think if we forego the color, oh, I'm sorry.
No, as far as stamped, if it's textured, I made a mistake, I have a textured patio. Textured tiles for patio, and water stays in that texture, it makes ice in the winter time.
That's very interesting, that's, that's something we probably should think about.
I had it to do over again, I'd get the same pattern, but smooth.
I, I agree with you, Claire, that, that, just like the textured blocks way we have going into the town office, had I do it over again, it sure wouldn't be textured like that, I think it's more the slip as.
I will bring back, let's see, we want color options and?
Plus, I'd also want to know what the, what the cost difference between herringbone and not being herringbone.
Again, Glenn, I can, I can.
I want to know all the costs, the beautification stuff is gonna cost.
Yeah, I'm, I'm afraid it will be prohibitive, because people take advantage.
Color options, cost, and then texture.
I, I mean, I think your contrast color would probably be your cheapest way out. It's gonna be a little more than plain concrete, but probably gonna be the cheapest way out.
Let's find out. We can wrap this up the next meeting, and honest, honesty. Okay?
Uh, as, as long as we, we, so when I bring a cost, it's not gonna be, I'm gonna say I'm gonna bring a cost, it's not gonna be the cost. It's gonna be a rough estimate, again, I could say something's gonna cost $1,000, and then the contractor tells me it's $10,000 in six months. Yeah, there's, that's, that's the life I live in right now.
We all do. Okay. Okay, so we're off that, anybody else got any other questions on that? New business is the discussion approval of the business.
We talked about a new business, so the Economic Development Committee met last night. Uh, we had two, uh, we had two applicants for our revolving loan fund. One is the Donuts of Rutland, and the other is Green Mountain Elite Sports. The EDC approved, or the EDC is recommending a $10,000 loan to the Donuts of Rutland, and a $15,000 loan to Green Mountain Elite Sports. For the Donuts of Rutland, they're, uh, they're gonna start their construction project up here on West, I'm sorry, Washington Street in three weeks. You see, if you've been by lately, the fence is up, the Conex is in, or the, the container is in. This $10,000 will pay about 20% of their cooler cost. So, uh, the, the cost of the project, I think they said was 1.3 million. This is just helping them get that walk-in cooler, uh, as part of the project. For Green Mountain Elite Sports, uh, this is a new business starting in Fairhaven.
Green Mountain what?
Elite Sports.
Elite, thank you.
Just for, um, to be transparent, the owner of Elite Sports is Chad Viggé. Mr. Viggé would like to start a recreation center, is what I'm gonna call it, uh, in our town. The $15,000 would be used to purchase, purchase a building. And for the record, I just want to recuse myself from conversation. Really?
What's your pleasure, folks? You got two, now we have that money, that's, Glenn, do you want to speak to that, or?
Well, what I just wanted to add, add to that right there, what we have in revolving loan funds, we had about that $45,000.
Yep.
We had already had $15,000 for, uh, the new restaurant. This right here gets our revolving loan funds out there, so that we have the $15,000, the $10,000, gets all the money that we have, our loaned out there now, working still. And what it's gonna accomplish really is, three, three, uh, we have two, uh, businesses, the Donuts of Rutland was gonna go in anyway, but now they, they're, they're looking to add another walk-in cooler, uh, as well, which, which is gonna help increase the tax base here. And plus the, the new, uh, I think it's gonna be called Chad's The Haven?
The Haven.
Sports, uh, complex, uh, there. Again, both of them looking at, uh, the, the Donuts one look like they could be adding as, as many as nine new jobs. I think The Haven, you, you, once it's up and running, we're estimating two to three, Chad?
Two to four.
Two to four. So, uh, that, the Economic Development Committee was unanimous in saying, yes, this, we, we have the funds. It, it seems like it, it follows the, the new rules we put together, that says, this is what's gonna get us some, some new business in here.
So we need a motion to accept that recommendation and to allot that fund.
I make the motion, are we, uh, supportable?
I'll second that.
Everybody understand what we're doing? It's two separate loans going to two separate businesses?
I think we should just vote on the separate one, I think.
Yeah, that's probably true.
Just, and let's just articulate what it is, so I guess. I guess the first one would be a $15,000 loan to Donuts of Rutland for a, oh, I'm sorry, $10,000 to Donuts of Rutland for a walk-in pool.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I have a second to that.
All those in favor?
I abstain.
You could go on that one, but, but sorry, you didn't. There's another one, for 15.
All right, I'll move that we, uh, we approve a $15,000 revolving loan to Green Mountain Elite Sports for purchase of a building.
Second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
I abstain.
All right. Good enough, we've got some businesses that are gonna get help. That's great.
Do we anticipate having more funds go into that, or?
It rolls back from them paying back.
Oh, okay, got it.
They pay it back, we loan it back out, but.
These are three-year terms, or?
Uh, for purchase of a property, it's five years, for purchase of equipment, it's three.
Oh, got it.
Okay.
So the, the walk-in cool is three years?
All right, policy review, hey.
Yeah.
We got you finally. Sorry, we've been long-winded tonight, I apologize, you guys hanging around.
So in your packets, I made this just as confusing as I possibly could for you, and I apologize. So, uh, in your package, you have two versions of the policy. One of them has a highlighted section in the middle that says program for refund. This is what the board requested, this was the, just send the money back policy. The other one is highlighted under shall mail a letter, this is what I'm calling the Eileen policy.
I haven't seen that, so I don't know exactly.
So it's, uh, what this one is, is that in our experience over the last two years, most residents don't want their money back, they just want that money rolled on top of their next tax bill. Which would be counterintuitive to just send your money back policy. So that's what that's all about. And Eileen, she can speak to a little bit, uh, more in detail about that.
You're on.
Okay, so one of the reasons that we, I personally don't want to see it open to the system is, once you write, once you enter a name into the AP, and you write a check. once you write a check, once you enter a name into the AP and you write a check off of it, that name remains in the AP. You can't take it out. So if we were to do this, where we return everyone a check, it would make AP extremely convoluted. I mean, there would be so many names that it would take forever to search for specific factors. It's just adding onto the database that shouldn't come in. So what I want to do is basically just send out a letter stating you have this over. If you don't want it, or if you don't, if you want it returned, we'll send you a check. You have a deadline, we'll send you a check. If not, it just rolls into the next year. Last year, I think I had three or four people. This year, I think I had two. That's all the, most people have paid over. It's like found money. It's, it's just starting on next years. So your first two payments, you may not have to pay as much or if anything at all. It's there. Most people are just, well, it's there, just leave it. I don't have to worry about it. It was like 40s, 38, I think it were over $5 this year. And two people asked for it. It's not something that we want to bog down our system or could be at ease. It's just a simple form. And most people do pay. If they come in and write, you know, let's say it's $298 or $300, I'll just put it on the next one. They'll do that with the water and they'll do that with this.
That's not a problem.
Yeah.
No, actually, it works quite well.
We figured it was easy though. It would make sense with the AP. I'd see the vendor list at work and I can get that.
Yeah. Then you know how long it takes to finish sometimes to just find that.
Because they're all there, we don't go away. Before, I was just thinking it would be simpler just to keep the law right, but I understand why, why it makes a big deal. I mean, what if we didn't even send a letter to these folks? What if they just, what if it's somewhere, somewhere around the tax thing?
No, it would be nice to do that, but there's a few people like, oh, last year somebody closed on a house and the bank, they had made their payment, but then the bank, when they got to closing, said, oh, no, you've got to pay this because they didn't have that part of the effort. So we ended up with a thousand, over a thousand dollars over. I can understand. He just bought a new house. He's paid a thousand dollars more than he wants. It's, it should be able to, he should be able to get it back. And that's usually what happens or somebody has passed away and family has paid him just because they didn't know how much they've been paid in the nature of pay. So now they find out they didn't pay, they want that. That kind of situation.
Well, Eileen, this is Glenn. So the one that would make your job more efficient is the one that I see is highlighted, show mail a letter?
Yes.
Okay. That's the one you'd like to see?
Yes.
So essentially, all we have to do is adopt that?
Make a motion to approve the updated policy.
Credit balance policy.
Refund a small credit balance policy featuring the?
Shell mail?
Shell mail a letter verbiage.
Everybody understand that? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I got it. No, no, I, okay.
Whatever.
Fix this one if I get it?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Have one to sign. Sometime when you get better, come on in and sign this.
Yeah, hopefully I'll come in and finish this probably by.
Sorry we kept you that long for just that? Thanks.
Yes. Liz is here for executive session.
Oh, okay. All right. Oh, thanks. Parking lot. I can tell you the zoning regs. Our next meeting is the 19th. We will clean up what we have and submit it to you guys at that point, this board at that point. The downtown designation will not be in the zoning that we have at this point, but we, we are working towards that. It's, it's a little more complicated, but we want to get some zoning regs in because we need to get going on town plan. So we can add that, the downtown designation at any time when we get it cleaned up, when we get it cleaned up.
Chairman, could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
That we take downtown designation off parking lot for now, but replace it with re, I don't know what the right wording is, but forget our village, get our, re, renew our village designation group?
The what?
The village designation that runs out?
Oh, okay.
That we, that, so that, that we can, I don't know, Joe, is there something? Who initiates that?
That's, that's actually me, Glenn. The state, they extended that period of time. I think it's coming up next year, but I can reach out. And that's just, that's just like a regular administrative action. That's not, it's not like a big project to do.
So, so we don't need to put it in our parking lot?
I mean, just.
I think we should leave it there. I think it's a good idea to keep it in our.
I know, I'm just worried that, Joe, prior to you coming here, we weren't able to get grants because we did not, because we didn't have the village designation? I mean, I think we should be doing something with that.
Yeah, I can put it, do you want to put it on there, Glenn? Yeah, Glenn, I can, I can drop that on there and take the other one off if that's what the board wants.
The planning commission is, the planning commission is working on downtown. They, as soon as we get done with the plan, the town plan, that will be the next thing on the, on the working list for us. Unless anybody has anything else on the parking lot, you want to do board roundtable?
I got one. I got ABW engineering garage.
Yep, so I reached out to the armory. Who's that? I reached out to him. He's going to get me the plans for that, or the bit of information he has. We, we can talk about it every week. I feel like I'm going at this like, I feel like I'm going at this backwards though. I don't, I'm kind of trying to pull plans from other towns and other places to be able to provide the board with a number to then move towards the voters. I'm not confident, to be honest, I'm not confident in, in what I'm going to get. The engineers told me use a square footage number based on, you know, the size of a building, which I could do that, but the, the big, so let me, let me back down a little bit. The big issue up there is the dirt work that's going to come. Like I can give you a number for a building and that should be relatively easy. The dirt work up there, there's clay, there's going to need to be filled, there's going to need to be drainage. Without having somebody poke around up there, I, I can't tell you what that cost is going to be. I can ask what I'm going, the direction I'm going is, I can get a building cost. I'm asking the armory, the military for what it looked like for them to do their dirt work. If I can get kind of a square footage, then maybe I can ask somebody local to give me an estimate on what that would cost.
Yeah, it got basically the building I had, but I'm sure it changed a little, but you know, we just got to decide what we want. But you know, the, the ground structure up there is very important.
That's, that's what's giving me pause, Rich.
That's where we're at.
And that's why I'm, that's why I'm trying to get some numbers for that. I can't come in and tell you it's going to be 1.3 million, go to vote, and then it comes in at two. Because then, God, could you imagine that debacle? I don't want to be that guy. So that's, I'm, I'm doing the best I can.
The 1.3 million is very much a fly in the sky, by the way. Not afraid. Got anything for roundtable?
No, I think I'm all right tonight.
Sure.
Nothing really. I just, you know, I hope that we can keep all the people who've been affected by this horrible flooding in our thoughts as well as the first responders and the many people who've stepped to help.
Been rough. Been a couple of weeks, hasn't it?
And to the extent that any of us can contribute anything, I hope we will.
Thanks. The only thing I, Glenn?
No, I have nothing, Bob.
Okay. The only thing I have is, did you have any discussions on the right of way for the, for the solar field?
Yes, I sent them all our requests. He sent me back a, a map, which was not helpful at all. So I, I think they're in, they're doing their internal discussions.
Okay. Well, keep at them and make it very clear that we're not, we're not against this project. We just want to make sure the town is well.
I'll, I'll reach out to them again.
Okay. All right. Financial report. Are you good to do that, Glenn?
Yep. I'll make a motion to pay Gabriel for $39,475.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Jason seconded. Glenn more, okay. And?
I'll make a motion to pay the general worker $221,425.67.
Seconded.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Checkbook says?
And the checkbook status is $581,488.47.
Thank you. All right. We have to go into executive session if we can.
I make a motion. Go into executive session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.